Good evening.
Today is October the 1st, 2019. Our thought for today, winning doesn't always mean being first. Winning means you're doing better than you done before. That's Bunny Blair. I want to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. Tonight, our guest pastor tonight, our guest churches, Pastor Willie Davis, sir. If you would, please come up. He was with Murray Church tonight, and we are excited about having him. If you would, please, sir. You know what? I was supposed to be there talking. I didn't give you any instructions, did I? If you would, stand behind the podium on that side and tell us a little bit about yourself. You did so much in this community, so everybody knows you. But if you would, just tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us a little bit about your church and pray for our community, please.
I will. Thank you, sir. To Chairman Baines and the Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners, good evening. I bring you greetings from the Murray Memorial Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, 4100 Northwest Street. Church on five-foot of law. I'm a native of Newton County, graduate of Newton County High School, 1975 graduate of Newton County High School. Alumni of City of Covetown, where I recently retired after 42 years working with Mr. Cowan and others there. I was with the Police Department for 34 years, the other eight I've served in personnel as the Recruiting and Training Manager for the city. Upon a brief retirement, I started working part-time with Sheriff's Department, Newton County Sheriff's Department, as a liaison for the Resident Substance Abuse and Treatment Program and the Work Ready Program, which is a collaboration between Newton County Sheriff's Department, Georgia Piedmont Tech Action Incorporated, and several of our industries in the community, where they hire our inmates to go out and work. And we have a program there, so. And my wife is here tonight, Angela White Davis. She keeps me straight.
She is a county employee.
She is a county employee. So she told me I had to go back to work, so I had to find something. Okay. Let us pray. I don't want to pray with my back to the floor. I think I got a preaching voice, so you should be able to hear me. Is that, can I do that?
Yes, sir.
It'll be on tape?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for another day and another day's journey. Lord, you woke us up this morning, and you started us on a new day that we'd never seen before. We've taken the opportunity, Lord, to be the best that we can be in this day and do the best that we can. So, Lord, we thank you for bringing us out tonight to this assembly. And, Lord, we thank you for these county Commissioners who have found that we're dedicated to service in this community. And, Lord, give them strength and continue to give them wisdom that whatever task is before them, that they will do it in spirit and in truth in the decisions that they make. That righteousness will prevail, and the community might reap a harvest and be fruitful because of it. We thank you for these many citizens who've come out and gathered here tonight. It shows that they want to see a greater Newton. They want to see what greater than it is. We serve in a community of one Newton. That means that we come together in spite of our differences, that we come together for the greater need of the people. So, Lord, continue to bless this meeting, and it would be all that you would have it to be. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Pastor, we want to take this opportunity to thank you so much for all the years that you have served this community over at the City of Covetown, and now you're working with the Sheriff's Department, serving the entire county. So you did so much in this community already, and we know you're going to do great things with the Murray Church. And so we just, we got a certificate of appreciation to tell you how much we appreciate you tonight. Thank you again, sir. Next, we're going to have our Pledge Allegiance by, we'll ask Commissioner Henderson if he will lead us tonight. Next, we have the agenda adoption. We'll have a few changes. On number 11, we want to take off Part Two. We want to take, remove that completely. And 9A, we want to remove J. off the consent agenda and make that 9A. and Mr. Phil Johnson. Any other changes you see, Commissioners? We want to remove J. from the consent agenda and make that 9A. And our charges of are Dan Ragsdale and Phil Johnson. Commissioner, I seek a motion to approve with the changes.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Our next on the agenda is Citizens' Comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You may comment this time. You have three minutes to do so. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next is the Chairman's Report. Ms. Sarah Hall, if you would, please come up tonight.
I just want to tell you tonight about the upcoming job fair. I think you all are aware. It is this Friday, October the 4th. I'd love to once again invite you to come out, located on your table right out front. For any of the people who are here, there's a full list of over 50 vendors that will be there. And a couple of highlights, just to let you know, this year, we are adding a couple of new things. We will have free mobile labs provided by WorkSource Atlanta, the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission, and DecabSource Work, I'm sorry, WorkSource Decab that will be there and present to provide free internet for anybody that wants to apply for a job right there on the spot, and they can use the computers or edit their resume. Or we will have helpers to help you build a resume if you don't even have one. We can make one on the spot that day. We will also have a free coat closet. So it's always important to dress for success and to look your best. And when you look your best, you get to act your best and hopefully land that job. So anybody that comes in that might need a jacket or a coat, men or women's, will have range of sizes. Goodwill of North Georgia and Fish of Walton County are donating over 400 jackets for free. And so anyone that can come in and grab those, we really hope that people utilize this and they take them home. There's no cost. We will also have six different workshops available that day. Resume writing, interview skills, dress for success, soft skills you need, how to work out of bad credit. And anybody can take those. They'll be in 30-minute intervals. And a part of all of this, we're just saying, please come. Share with your constituents. It's all over Facebook. It's all over Instagram. Brian has been wonderful and has posted it on the county sites as well. The event will begin, the doors will open at 8:30 in the morning, and will close about 3 o'clock. And so it'll be all day at Georgia Piedmont Technical College off of Bob Williams Parkway. If there's any information you need, please let me know. Please let the other counties know. I just want to thank the Chairman and for his leadership and support that we have pulled in six different counties together. And again, when we see a range of jobs and what we're doing and reaching over county lines, it's really impactful. So please come out. We'd love to see you stop by. The Congressman's Office will be present that day as well and multiple other counties. So any questions or anything?
Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you tell us how we make donations for the Dress for Success?
Yeah, sure. So if you want to, Commissioner Schultz, you can either donate them to me, and we'll get them to Fish. You can either go to Fish in Walton County, or we will get them to the North Georgia Goodwill. Our Goodwill is not a location here yet. They are taking them out of Athens or Atlanta, but they're bringing the truck in tomorrow. So if you have anything between tomorrow and Friday, we can take them gently used and if they're clean, and we'll put them on the racks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you all so much.
Thanks so much. Next, Mr. Kerr, County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I'd like to do tonight is talk just for a brief few minutes about our strategic plan. We, all of our department heads and the employees are continuing to work on implementation of the operational items. We've had a series of meetings with the community stakeholders, and we did publish and send out a targeted survey on, to find out what the thoughts of these people were on how we were progressing. We met with members of the original planning group to get their feedback. We received the feedback through the survey. We're currently analyzing that to see what the results mean. It was very informative. There are some things that we do need to do a better job at, and so we are looking at what type of additional things that we need to implement in order to get our message out and in order to keep people more informed about the strategic plan itself, and looking at various other ways to communicate besides through our, all of our web presence and in meetings and things like this. One of the things that's going to happen that I want to bring everybody's attention to, on October 14th, we'll be meeting with, an open meeting with the community to come and talk with our department heads and champions, plan champions, to talk about the progress that we've been making. That'll be held at Turner Lake on October the 14th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Everyone is invited. If you, we do have a dedicated spot on our website with our strategic plan. We also have some links from our Facebook pages, I believe, as well, and it is mentioned on Twitter. Certainly, if you're not, don't have availability to that, if you'll contact some of my office, any of the public can get you a copy of the plan, and so that you'll understand and see what it is that we're doing. But we'd like to encourage everyone to come out. The only way that we can improve ourselves is by getting feedback from the public that we serve. So we do request that you do that. Onto the report, and I'll talk a little, some of the things, items in this report, the monthly activity report are related, all of them are related to the strategic plan, but there's certain particular ones that I'd like to highlight. One thing I would like to mention is that, as you know, we did open an employee exercise area up on the, on part of the vacant part of the third floor on the admin building. We've had 50 people so far sign up to take part in that, and so it's open to all, any employees that want to utilize it. And we do have, we've got bicycles. We also have stair step and treadmills and some free weights in there, so. And at this point in time, I'd like to mention that I attended, as well as several members of the, several of the department heads. The sheriff was kind enough to invite us to his annual leadership conference. It was a very successful conference. I think we all got some really extremely valuable information. It was targeted towards law enforcement, but I think that the presenter at this, at this conference did an excellent job of being able to bring everyone in. So I thank the sheriff for those opportunities and know that we gained something from that. Now, onto the report, a couple of things. Another mention of staff training. Some of the members of the staff at the animal control shelter are going, have gained or earned, rather, been awarded scholarships to attend the National Animal Care Association. And so they will be attending at no charge to the county, with the exception of the registration fee. But the room, board, travel, all of that's being paid for by a grant from that organization. I also want to mention that our web presence on the animal, the animal control site has been viewed over 20,000 times in the last month. So we're getting quite a few hits on that. And this is also tied in with our, the Pet Finder and Adopt a Pet Program that we have with their parent agencies. One of the benefits that we've had from our filming that goes on on some of our properties here, Amazon has decided that they would like to, and they're paying to have the power out at Gaithers to be placed underground in order to give them some better shots, but also this is really and truly an enhancement to that property out there to have all of the power buried. Again, that's at no cost, at no cost to us. The Public Defender's Office is putting together a group of individuals who are voluntarily developing a criminal justice presentation that will be given to various youth organizations in the community, and this will give them some enlightenment as to the legal process and what happens if you should get in trouble and so forth. We've hired two new building inspectors, Bobby Copiny and Alman Knight, and a code enforcement officer, Tiana Combs. Also, in the Development Services Department, we're updating our water resources, flood and flood plain, environmental ordinances, and they will be having a working lunch with EPD and the stormwater inspectors in November, so that they can meet and greet the new staff and also as well bring them up to date on the latest regulations that have been put in place by EPD regarding water quality. Fire Department will be receiving its new 4,000-gallon tender. We believe towards the end of this, this month. It may be pushed out, possibly to the 1st of November, but this will allow us the ability to fight fires in areas of the county where we don't have any water. Also, the fire safety educate, pardon me, fire safety educator has been working with our senior services department to develop a fire training program for the seniors in our community, and once that's done, it obviously, and will be open to all free of charge, for those seniors who are interested in that. GIS has been working on the census data that we have been provided, and primarily what they are working on right now is to identify addresses that were existent, but for some reason were not counted during the last census, so that we get a better count. Also, they've been working very closely with Laura Bertram and the members of the Complete Count Committee. Our IT Department, as I have mentioned in the past, we did a, an in-house, an in-house security assessment, and we are now implementing some of the new security needs that we had in order for us to protect the information that we have. Also, Judge Carter and Kendra Mayfield of the Juvenile Courts have been teaching classes over at Georgia State, particularly on development of alternative programs for juvenile detention. And in the Public Works Department, the Road Stewardage Program, which is our grading program, is 99% complete. The construction out at Flat Shoals is about 99% complete with the, once they finish doing the paving on there and install the traffic signal, that will be complete. 2019 LMIG projects have been completed, and we paved over 20 miles of road with the LMIG projects alone. And currently, we're negotiating a contract with Newton Trails for Public Works to pave those, the trail system with the monies that we collected through impact fees for recreation. The, a couple of notes on the senior services and on animal control, the construction on those projects, drafts of plans have been done. There's an item on the agenda regarding the animal control shelter. We'll talk a little bit more about that, but we are completing, getting very close to completion on the drafts. And the, there will be a senior forum at the, at Turner Lake on October the 5th, or excuse me, October the 18th at 11:00 a.m. Everybody is invited to come. And also, the last thing I wanted to mention was that the, we are only four and a half feet down from full pool level at Lake Varner, so there's no concern about water, any type of rationing or anything for that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. That takes us to 7:30, which is our public hearing time. Mr. Judy, I know I saw it to ask you though, if you would, please come up.
Thank you for being here tonight, ma'am. Thank you. Chairman, Commissioners, this evening we have one zoning request before you. This is a modification, MOD 19-000001. This property is located, known as Mount Pleasant. It is off Highway 11. It is, it was originally 230.45 acres, and they are requesting on one of the modifications to reduce the development down to 55.06 acres. This is, existing zoning is accorded. It is also in the brick store overlay as Mount Pleasant and as well as Tier 3, which is mixed-use town center. It is located in District 1. The owner is Hunter Fowler LP, and the representative this evening will be Mr. Randy Vincent. The modification request is to amend for, to amend one of the conditions of zoning and to modify three other conditions. The conditions requested to be changed by the applicant is Condition 1A, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows. A, no more than 267 total dwellings and accessory uses and structures at a maximum density of 3.25 units to 4.85 units per acre. And they also are requesting to add the following. Modify the boundary, reducing the size of the property from 230.45 acres to 55.06 acres. To add a building type to the master plan called condos/apartments. And to add a building type to the master plan called Mount Pleasant Rentals. The history on the subject property. The subject property, known as Mount Pleasant, is a planned development first approved in February of 2007 by the Board of Commissioners. The applicant is proposing a new design on reduced acreage, 55.06 acres, and 175.39 acres will remain in conservation. The planned development no longer extends to Highway 278, but is centered west of Highway 11 with ingress and egress off Highway 11 and Cedar Lane. The development is also linked via road and trail access to Georgia State University Newton Campus. Dwelling types will now consist of estate lots, cottages, townhomes, student apartments, mid-rise condos, mixed-use and non-residential. If you'll look at the photograph that is up here now, you can see the parcels identified, which would be the 55.06 acres. You can also see up there where there is the existing parkway that serves our existing college out there off of Highway 11. Staff went through the entirety of the conditions that were placed on the property back when it was approved in February of 2007, and have, and offer the following as recommended conditions. Again, based on the fact that this property has changed boundaries, some of the original conditions are no longer, would be effective. There's no need for us to look at entrances off of Highway 278, because the boundary does not abut Highway 278. So if you will bear with me, I did have some problems with formatting, so I tried to correct those. Just to let you know, I do recognize that they're offshifty, but if you will bear with me, I have about three pages of PowerPoint conditions to read to you. Should the Board of Commissioners approve this modification, staff recommends the conditions to be approved as follows. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows. A, no more than 267 total dwellings and accessory uses and structures at a maximum density of 3.25 units to 4.85 units per acre. B, no more than 22,800 total square feet of mixed-use and non-residential uses. C, modify the boundary, reducing the size from 230.45 acres to 55.06 acres to be developed, and 175.39 acres to remain as a conservation area as defined by the 2009 Newton County zoning ordinance. D, to add the building type to the master plan called condos/apartments. E, to add a building type to the master plan called Mount Pleasant Rentals. F, the minimum lot sizes shall be as follows. Cottage, 4,000 square feet. Estate lots/house, 6,500 square feet. Townhouse, 2,300 square feet. The minimum, excuse me. The minimum heated floor area per dwelling unit shall be as follows. Cottages, 900 square feet. Estate lots or house, 1,600 square feet. Townhouse, 1,200 square feet. Mid-rise condos/apartments, 700 square feet. And student/senior flats/the Mount Pleasant rental cottages would be 500 square feet. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A, to the site plan received by the Department of Development Services, and there is a typo on that, so my apology. The Department of Development Services on September 11th, 2019. Said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance and these conditions prior to the approval of the land disturbance permit. Unless otherwise noted herein, compliance with all conditions shall be in place prior to the issuance of the first condition, certificate of occupancy. Three, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, reduce if necessary rules applying generally by the Newton County ordinance to comply with the master plan referenced in Condition 2A. Any reduction or variance to rules is subject to the approval of the director and in compliance with Section 300-040H. That was an original condition. B, provide the following building setbacks. Estate lots or a house lot, the front yard shall be 15 feet. The side yard shall be five feet. The rear yard shall be 17 feet, including five-foot alley easement. five feet from the side yards adjacent to streets, rear yard 12-foot alley easement. Commercial, there are no building setbacks for commercial and office uses. C, provide off-street and on-street parking as shown in the master plan referenced in Condition 2A. All off-street parking for commercial shall be located in the rear of the buildings. D, provide a five-foot planning strip between the sidewalk and back of curb along the residential streets. E, stormwater plan to be reviewed and approved by the county stormwater manager. F, comply with all development standards as required in Section 300-020A through P. And that is all of the conditions and I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Judy, one quick question for me.
Yes, sir.
So it's already been approved for apartments? These are just, these are just conditions, condos? These are just conditions, changes?
Yes, sir. The original master plan that was proposed stated there would be 322 attached or multifamily type homes, including lofts, flats and apartments. The current plan shows a maximum of 190 multifamily units, which would be a reduction of 132 multifamily units. So there is a reduction in both multifamily units as well as there is a reduction in single-family units. We went from 750 total residential structures down to a maximum of 267 residential structures.
And the zoning was already there for it?
The zoning was already in place as well as this property falls in the brick store overlay, so there would be compliance with the brick store as well that were not added as conditions of zoning because it would be redundant.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any questions?
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for that, that presentation. Now, I, just to set the tone here, I want everyone to know that I had sent these, a series of questions to Ms. Johnson. Her and I have been speaking over the last several weeks and, and I've met with the owners, so I, if this seems scripted, it is, and it's for public consumption, public information. So that's why this, this is kind of this way. The chairman has already asked one of those questions. So back in 2007, this property was zoned to accept apartments. And I'm not going to use multifamily, multifamily units, I'm going to say apartments, okay?
Yes, sir.
This, okay, so that was approved by a previous board, all right? Next question would, would move us to, we're taking, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're taking roughly, what, 230 acres and sizing it down to 55 acres and reducing the number of rooftops dwellings almost proportionately, almost proportionally. I see we increased the, the number of dwellings per acre about one-third. So we didn't do it quite proportionally, but it's, it's still a, it's still a minimization of, or reduction in what we had originally planned for that area. And also, this is not, this is what, wasn't what I scripted, but, so this no, the, the current, the new proposal, the new proposed development does not, does no longer go all the way to Highway 11, right?
Correct, it does not. This picture up here, and these are actually the applicant slides, but this picture up here, if you'll see where it's kind of hashed out, that is the area that has been placed in conservation. And then if you'll see that dark blue line, and I apologize, I don't have a little red pointer, the pointer doesn't work on this, but the, the area that is identified, thank you, the area that is identified there is the reduced boundary and this is pulling it up closer to where the actual college and the parkway is currently located.
Thank you. All right, so, and I'll have to read this one. The zoning amendment itself, if apartment, apartment slash multifamily housing was allowed in the previous development plans, what are we adding in terms of verbiage? Or what's the purpose in adding the verbiage apartment to our new, our new proposed development?
And I did go through these as well as what, with our legal staff. And when you're setting zoning conditions, anytime a petition comes in front of a body, a government body, the more specific you can be in what they are asking and what you are approving, the better protection that you have. That is what you're going to get developed. The more loose the language is, then it leaves it open for interpretation. So this is actually for protection. We do not want it to be vague. We want it to be very specific that if these are the house plans that, or the building types and structures that they are proposing, that this board understands and we want to hold them to that if that is what this board desires. So that is why we added specific language.
Okay. Thank you. So let me, let me transition a little over to the, the conservation area and I'll come back to the apartment component in just a second. So the conservation area was or is being sold to a Greenspace Bank, I'll call it. Is that, is that right or a conservation group or?
My understanding, it has been placed in some type of conservation. I believe federal, but the applicant would be much better to answer that than I would.
Okay. So in terms of development, that, that can never be developed, that can never be developed by a developer?
As it stands right now, no, sir, it would not be allowed to be developed. However, you did specifically ask if there was any way to reverse the conservation and legal staff did advise that yes, it appears that the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia has the ability to condemn the conserved property and would allow it to come back, to potentially be developed. Now, I wasn't part of any meetings that the owner had when they set up the conservation. I'm sure they hold a lot of information that I'm not privy to. However, the, the hard answer is even though it's placed in a conservation, there are processes by which it could be taken out of that conservation. That is why we amended one of the conditions, which was Condition 1A. The original condition placed in your packets just read, modify the boundary, reducing the size from 230 acres to 55.06 acres. We have further went on to state to, that modify the boundary, reducing the size from 230.45 acres to 55.06 acres to be developed and 175.39 acres to remain as a conservation area as defined by the 2009 Newton County zoning ordinance. This assures that any change in this conservation, because it's tied now to a condition of zoning, would come back before a public hearing and would allow the entire public process to start over.
But it would not have to come back before this board?
Yes, sir, it would. If this is a condition of zoning, should you approve this this evening and adopt this condition of zoning, we have stated that the 175.39 acres that may now be in a different type of conservation, we're also identifying it as a conservation area. So then it is attached to their conditions of zoning and they would have to come back in front of a, for a modification.
Okay, thank you. One other, back to the, the apartment thing or rental, Mount Pleasant Rentals, can you, rentals, can you define what that might be exactly?
Those are actually very small cottages. I'm always cautious about using trendy words, but this would be somewhat, because they would be around 500 square feet, this would be something like a tiny house. I do know that there were some renderings that the applicant had provided that are part of this slideshow. I do not want to go through with those. I don't want to do their presentation, but I do know that they do have some models of the type of structures those would be.
Okay. And, and Condition 3A, could we go back to that on the?
Yes, sir.
On the slides?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to need an interpretation on that, if you don't mind.
Okay.
What does that, reduce if necessary rule, if necessary rules applying generally to the Newton County Ordinance? What is that?
When this property was originally rezoned as a cord, Section 300-0, just Division 300 is the cord language and I would have to actually pull up my zoning ordinance over there to specify that, but this was an original condition of zoning and it would, it, it binds them to building to what the cords requirements were at that time, specific to this section. Would you like for me to get the zoning ordinance to read that for us?
No, that won't be necessary.
Okay.
Thank you. Let me, let me ask one last question, if I could. So if, if we decided tonight to, to approve this zoning amendment and we had, if we had something we wanted to add, that would have to go back before the zoning board, correct?
No, sir, are you referring to an additional condition?
Yes, I guess you would call it that.
Okay. Modifications are simply because this board is the legislative body. Modifications are only brought to this board. The Planning Commission did not hear this petition. It did not require it to go in front of them. So if you chose to add a condition, if we could shore that condition up this evening and you chose to make a motion, you could, you could make your motion that would include that amended or additional condition, or if you wanted to change any of the other conditions on here, you do have the right to do that. This board would set what the conditions would be for this property. I also do want to point out, just for the public's information, in general, when we talk about multifamily, in the brick store overlay right now, you could do eight units per acre if it was just multifamily. Their maximum density according to Condition, and I apologize, I do not have my glasses on, according to Condition 1A, their maximum density would be 4.85 units per acre and that includes single-family and multifamily. But if this was in the brick store, in the brick store overlay right now and you had a property that came forward and can meet all of the conditions of your zoning ordinance, someone could come in and do eight units per acre. So their density is almost half, their overall density is almost half of that.
Well, my, you know, my concern is, is not with, I know we're shrinking this whole, from the original plan, we're shrinking it by, what, 75% it looks like to me, but, or at least two-thirds. So I, I don't have a, a problem with what we're doing there. It's, it's what, you know, my constituency has spoken real loud to me over the last couple of weeks, real loud. So, especially in the last couple of days. So my, my concern is what, what the terminology apartments means, to be honest with you. And, and we've, I fought off the TPA down on Highway 278, told them no. I told another owner in the, in the brick store overlay, no. So I think what I, when I, when I talk about condition, I think, when I, when I spoke with the, the owner, he and I had a very frank conversation and, and it was his, he told me his intent was that this, that multifamily or apartments was intended for student housing. So my condition would be that any, any multifamily development or anything labeled apartment would be for student housing and student housing only.
If I may, Commissioner, I did bring that, that was one of the questions that you had posed, that was there any way the county could stipulate an additional label? And that was question number nine. And when I spoke with our legal counsel, and I'm going to read you specifically the answer. Zoning laws address limitations to physical characteristics such as building materials, building side setbacks and the physical use of the structure as in residential. However, our legal counsel did caution, if we limited it to who it could be rented to, reminding us that we need legal justification as to why we would include or exclude any specific group of people. Zoning laws are about the building materials, setbacks, sizes, what its overall use is, not who is going to be using it. So I would caution if that would be the, the desire of this board, that we would need to have legal justification as to why we would be requesting that.
So, so what other, and this may be a question for legal, what, what other, what else can we do to limit this to student housing if, if that's what we want to do?
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. The advice that Judy has given here today is the same, obviously the advice that myself and Paul Freckie provided. There is no way to limit to a only student housing unless the Georgia State built that housing as a part of their residential uses. If not, we have to be very careful in limiting who lives inside that structure versus the structure itself and the land it sits on. And off, right off the bat, I don't think we can do that. I have no, in my mind, there's no toolkit of how I could fix that one. Agree? I mean.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Carter.
My experience going back to the days as a planner, I believe that it would be in violation of Fair Housing Act if you target and you do that to the exclusion or if you target it just one group. That's, I, I think that there would be a challenge, someone would challenge that who wanted to rent an apartment there and they were not a student. It is, would, it would, besides the fact that I think that the county would be stepping, is one step too far of what the authority of the county is in those cases.
That's everything?
I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. At this time, we will, we're going to open it up for those, for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. You have a 10-minute timeframe, so be mindful, there may be someone wanting to come behind you. You have a 10-minute timeframe, please come up now. If you want to speak in favor, state your name, your address for the record, please. Please be mindful, there may be someone behind you. This session is only for 10 minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Randy Vincent, 450 Jenkins Road, Covington. So the slides I've got here, I wanted to give you a brief background of where it's come from. So in, this aerial photo is actually from 2002, which is when the, when the Arnold Fund and Rob Fowler purchased the property from Ben and Alex Gross. And this was the closest interchange to Atlanta that was unmolested. It was still a very rural place. And what do I do to advance it? There we go. This was the zoning that was in place since the late 80s. There's multifamily, multifamily, M1 industrial, highway commercial, highway commercial, neighborhood commercial, R45, which was three-quarter acre residential development. This was what was in place since the late 80s when Ben and Alex Gross had it rezoned and this terrified Mr. Fowler and the Arnold Fund that something could come that would have this type of configuration. So after they purchased it and they were able to donate 100 acres to attract Georgia Perimeter College to the community, they actually gave the land to the college for them to build their campus and we came up with this master plan to build a town so we could have a real college town around the campus. And the intent was to have a full mix of all the complements of what a town would have, you know, all the different housing types from large estate homes down to townhomes and apartments and mix of. and a mix of uses with commercial and offices as well. When the, so that was back in two thousand and six and seven, the recession hit. Obviously, there wasn't an appetite to do something of this size. Mr. Fowler was able to find the ability to put a hundred and seventy-five acres into conservation easement. And this is a permanently protected conservation easement. There are a few entities that can condemn a conservation easement, but it's very difficult even for them to do so. It still has to go through a public hearing process. So I, I haven't heard of any that get condemned for anything much more than a very serious utility easement. You know, I've never seen it go for development. So now we've reduced it down from the two hundred and thirty-some acres down to fifty-five. So we're gonna, we're gonna now show a master plan for that site. Still trying to complement the college as a college town, it's just gonna be a lot smaller now. And we're gonna, we're gonna try to get a variety of, of uses in here as well. So this image shows, this is the college building that's out there right now. This is standing in that park right here, looking out to the, to the campus building. And then if you turn around in that square and look this way, you will find, you know, the mixed-use townhomes and condominiums clustered around this square. So the denser part of the development is gonna be up here closer to the campus and, and near the, near the buildings that are out there now. Coming in the entrance way, we felt that this was such a monumental entrance that it needed to have a presence. And so we were looking at big stately southern homes that, you know, are gonna be at least four or five thousand square feet. But this was, was an area that we felt that the demand for large stately homes may not be as grand as we, as we hope. And therefore, they could easily be made into very high-end condominiums or apartments here, four, four or five units per house. But it would still give that stately entrance into the college, all served off of an alley. Parking would be in the rear, you know, the, the stately parkway would not be interrupted with driveways or garages or anything like that. The neighborhood, when you, when you get out of the townhomes and the condominiums and all in, in this area, it would, the lots would go to fifty feet wide, forty to fifty to fifty-five feet wide, very similar to Clark's Grove. We're using all of the same principles that we've used at Clark's Grove, the same alley layouts, the same lot configurations, and we'd be building very similar house types. These would be the representative of what the condominiums and apartments would be like, you know, around the town square here, flanking the, the campus with the ability to do, you know, a slightly larger student housing, you know, back here. All of this is adjacent to the conservation land, the hundred and seventy-five acres of conservation land. And then the product type that we got kind of excited about is a, what we're calling the Mount Pleasant rental. And because of all this conservation land and, and the, this will be permanently protected as pasture or forest out here, that the ability to have almost a resort-like retreat in a cluster of smaller cottages of about five hundred square feet, looking out over this pasture and forest and there's ponds, it's absolutely picturesque property back here. We thought a great opportunity to, to do that. Some of it could go to faculty even, you know, that would be on a, on a budget. But that was the, that was the thought behind what we're calling the Mount Pleasant rental. And that would be a single ownership. We see that this as being a single ownership. It wouldn't be each one of these cottages is owned individually. It would be set up as a resort. And then out here at the entrance and adjacent to Highway eleven, we do honor the hundred-foot setback that is out there now with the brick store overlay. But we see a very simple southern architecture for the commercial buildings out here that could be anything from a, you know, an ice cream shop or something that catered to the students. And there we have the, the overall master plan.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in favor? We got, we got one, then you come next.
My name's Rob Fowler and I'm the guy that been doing this stuff. And I guess really, I want to say it, what we're trying to do here is, is build something that we can be profound, be proud of. Excuse me, I get tongue tied. And really creates a better entrance into your homes. I live two miles from this place in Skyline, so I have the same concerns that you do, that the place will be attractive, will be something that you want and will help. Also, I hope that we can do something about Georgia eleven. It has, we're gonna have a hundred-foot setback which could be widened and could be four-laned and we could put a tree line down the middle. And that's gonna take all of us, those people, you and me, to make something happen. And then I guess the other thing is that park could become a park that Newton County, if they had the money, which they do not today, could become a park for all of us, but that would take our help too.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it because I have been on that plantation back in early eighteen hundreds.
State your name and address for me.
And really, we got a two-acre cemetery there that my family burying. And we have slaves on one part, share crop around one now. Our church member and other community buried around there. Just gonna enhance that, gonna help us to keep that cemetery in focus with everything. Like you said, get the in and out of eleven when we have fun, we usually have problems. And I kinda wish it had a state law like it was because District, we said one Newton. District one is not building anything. They don't, they can't even put a bank down there because they don't have capital income yet. I know with some buildings going in there. We can't even get an ATM land at the hub junction for the student to run up there to get some change. They have to come to Covington, Georgia, because of District one. We need to have one Newton and, and put a zoning all over. I know farmers, we're gonna protect our farmer. For that land, that Mount Pleasant, it used to be a seven-hundred acre plant. It'd been reduced down to what you see. And the owners then were kind enough to put a school there and donate that land and we educating our kids there. So I'm, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Fleming, Fleming Pitts. Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Thank you, that end, that portion of our zoning. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose. You may come at this time, please. Please note that it's a ten-minute time limit. So be mindful of the person that needs to come behind you because we will stop directly at ten minutes. So please be respectful of the person, persons that may come behind you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Karen Brooks, three sixty-five Hinton Road, Social Circle. I would like to take you all on a journey regarding this zoning modification. I first noticed the sign sometime the week of nine sixteen. And that weekend, one of my neighbors asked if I knew what it was about. I visited the planning and zoning office Wednesday, nine twenty-five, to see if I could get a copy of the modification. I was informed by Sheena Applewhite, the planner, that it was still being written up. I asked if she could explain what it was about and she informed me that there was a request for a reduction of units and space. I asked if she would please send me the modification as soon as possible. I waited until Saturday morning, September twenty-eighth, and I sent an email to Commissioners Edwards and Cowan requesting the information with my questions. Commissioner Cowan responded back that night with the modification for me to review. I received an answer on Monday afternoon, September thirtieth, from Sheena Applewhite. Now, here we are, Tuesday, October first, two thousand and nineteen. Here are a few of my questions. Page fourteen of the dwelling summary report shows the old and new. The old approved does not show mansion houses with forty-eight to sixty apartments, nor does it show mid-rise condo apartment or mid-rise student apartments. Was the scope changed after it was approved? What about the traffic coming out on Highway eleven? Have any of you been stuck in the traffic backup, trying to either turn out of the college or make it through the hub? And now this will add more traffic, trying to do both. In the short time I've had to review this modification, in my opinion, seems like it has been requested to put in apartments to make it go down better and the, and the conservation put in, to make it go down better for this board. And the residents of this area who supported the Mount Pleasant community were told that this would not happen. I would like to request that more time be invested by the commissioners to review the old plan that was approved and the impact on this newest modification. There are too many unanswered questions and the time could not have been sufficient for the citizens' input. I understand that the developer has met with each of the commissioners, but there has not been enough time for the citizens to review. The new site plan shows delivered nine eleven nineteen, page five. And even if you use that date till today, that would be twenty days. And you're gonna vote on it? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Bob Deter. I live at three ninety-four Hinton Road. Thank you, Stan, for your comments and the questions that you brought to the meeting this evening. I but, I have but three points. One, I am very concerned about the conservation, these hundred and seventy-some acres that are going into conservation. And all of a sudden, you know, ten years down the road, they're opened back up again. So that's one of my concerns. Two, we already have a lot of congestion there, which the other gentleman brought, that to your point. We can't even handle that right now. How are we gonna handle this? And thirdly, I've been in situations with apartments. Leads to crime, the way I look at it. And I moved down the eastern part of Newton County thirty-one years ago for a reason. And that was to get away from all of this. I don't know if our Sheriff's Department can handle this added commitment there. Because response time to a home alarm there is roughly about forty minutes right now. So other than that, I thank you much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Judy? Just a quick question. Staff recommendation was to, of approval or?
Staff did not give a recommendation on this for approval or denial. We did suggest that should the board approve this, we would recommend the conditions. If I was asked to make a, to give you, to give you a consideration from staff's perspective. I understand the concerns of the community. I would like to remind the board of just a few points to weigh. The original approval was for seven hundred and fifty residential units, with other supporting, they had a town center planned and other supporting structures. The request now is for two hundred and sixty-seven total units. I, I cannot find a zoning justification that would say this is going to increase the traffic more than if the seven hundred and fifty that were approved were developed out there. I would like to point, at least allow y'all to entertain that. The other thing that I would say is that these conditions of zoning are very specific. The applicant did actually submit an original application back in July. And there was some, there were some questions when staff had the opportunity to start working on the report that we had to have the applicant actually clear up. I do apologize to Ms. Brooks that she did not receive the information on Friday when it was sent to the Board of Commissioners. But this was legally advertised. It was advertised fifteen days before this public hearing. There was notification cards sent out to adjoining property owners fifteen days before this public hearing. And there was a sign placed on the property fifteen days before this public hearing. And this case has met the zip procedure laws in order for it to be brought before this board this evening for consideration.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Edwards, I seek a motion, please.
I will make a substitute motion.
Is that a motion on the floor?
I'll make it. My motion is at this table for a period of thirty days, until we can get some issues worked out, worked out within my constituency and satisfaction of some questions that have to do with conservation land, the apartments, and the traffic in the area.
There's been a motion that we tabled this for thirty days by Commissioner Edwards. It's been seconded by Commissioner Schultz. Discussion. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I was, I was on the board when we first approved all those, that town center. In that particular time, you know, I, I said to myself, I said, I thought it was a great idea, especially with the college and the students and stuff. And, and we had heard so much about. But it's just as Mr. Vincent had said, he said that there was a, you know, everything just put in the bucket. You know, all the stocks went down and everything. And to think, come back at this point and to really downsize it and still, you know, be able to meet the needs of, of the college students. You know, I think it's, I think it's good. I don't, I don't know why we keep on, you know, either you gonna, either you gonna vote it up or you gonna vote it down. And so I think, you know, why are we gonna keep on just, just wanting to talk about it for another year or two instead of just going in and, and moving on?
Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I, I do live in the area. I live in River Cove, which is right off of Georgia eleven. And this project was approved back in two thousand and seven. Pretty large project. But there's been a lot of changes in that area since then. And most significantly is in the industrial or the Joint Development Authority Park, Stanton Springs. We've added Baxter, which is now Takeda. That was in two thousand and twelve. Facebook came in in twenty seventeen. And we went from it being Georgia Perimeter College to Georgia State University, which is the largest university in Georgia, no disrespect to the Georgia Bulldog fans. But I'm a graduate of Georgia State. It is, it is the largest university system in Georgia, or largest university there in Georgia. We also have got Water and Sewer Authority planning right now to build a little river plant, wastewater plant down there to serve that area. So that area is growing. You've got just down at east, at one forty-two and two seventy-eight, you've got Eastside High School coming in. You know, the traffic is, traffic is gonna be there. I don't know how to stop that. I do know that there are some plans from DOT, Lloyd, I make, I think I've seen this, around about at eleven- Lloyd, I think I've seen this around about at eleven and...
Yes, sir.
Two seventy-eight.
That's correct.
And I think there was some, I know there's some property owners that I have talked to in my private practice that have property around there, that they've already got plans for some development at the hub area once that roundabout is designed and everything is put in place. The project here, I think, is cutting down substantially. So I think the traffic, if we leave it as it is, and let's say Mr. Fowler decides, I'm just gonna sell the whole thing, somebody else buys it, we're gonna have a pretty substantial amount of impact down there because it's already approved for that amount of residential units. And I feel like it's a reasonable recommendation to downsize it some. But I'm also, as I told Stan, I said, Stan, it's your district. I'm right there next door to you, but I do see the similar problems. But I know you're the one having to catch the, the public sentiment on this. So I understand the reasoning for wanting to delay it a little bit. But I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that the area is changing, and it's changing fast. And I don't, I don't know what Georgia State's plans are down there, but, you know, for Newton County to have a four-year university, we've never had that before, and now we've got it, that's pretty significant, I think, something to consider.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cowan. I want to remind this board of our responsibilities. This board did not set this in place. And, you know, we will be facing a lawsuit, you know. So I do want to remind you of our responsibilities. So I think Commissioner Mason was first, then Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's kind of somewhat ironic that we're discussing this because for about the last four weeks, I've been helping a good friend actually taking her daughter to Georgia State University every single morning, Monday through Thursday, for the past month. And I often wondered when I would drive out there, why does it seem as if this area is so underdeveloped when you have Georgia State University here? And so when I saw this come through, I said, wow, I think this will be an excellent opportunity for us to begin to be able to develop this area. I understand there is a concern with traffic. That concern is all over the county. I mean, everywhere in the county you go, you're gonna have that that you have to address. If we continue to stay where we are, I just don't think we are going to advance as a county like we need to. I have seen that Newton County is growing rapidly. There are people moving here in droves. And so I think we have to get to a point where we have to really begin to focus on the economic development of our county and not block every single thing that comes before us because we've gotta grow. We gotta build. We gotta establish. We gotta make investments. And having Georgia State University there, I think, to me, that this would be a great project. I think it will begin to grow and develop that area. As a matter of fact, you may even have some students that are commuting back and forth may no longer have to commute because now they have something where they can stay, and that can kind of reduce possibly some of that traffic. And so I think we want to start, as a county, looking at the big picture and not looking at small pockets. In our entire county, there's a lot of underdeveloped land that we are not utilizing. And if we're gonna continue to grow, I think we've gotta really start looking at various projects and really strongly considering them as we, as we begin to grow and to develop all across the county. And so for me, I think this is a great idea. And, you know, we're gonna have those traffic issues everywhere. We're gonna address those. We're slowly getting there, but I think this is a great idea. It looks great. And so I think it's something that we should strongly consider. And as you said, Mr. Chairman, you know, this isn't something that this board actually approved. It's already been approved. We just gotta make sure that when we're gonna get it done. And I think we want to really start looking at our economic development and really start growing our county and start looking at it from a different perspective.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I will have to say that I do believe that this project is a good step in the right direction, knowing what the, how the, how real estate is progressing, it is changing. And this is, this is looking at how that particular piece of property can adapt to a changing future. So I do, I do support the down, the downsized modification. However, I have been involved in two overlays over the course of my service, and I know that both of those, when we approved those overlays, the public in those overlay districts were not ready just yet, and we needed a little bit more time to meet with the public. And so I don't think that it hurts, based on your motion to table this for thirty days, to give you more time to meet with the public in your area, to answer their questions and have them more comfortable with this process or this particular modification. And so I, whereas I support it, I think it's reasonable to give you that thirty days.
Hey, guys, we don't, we don't, we don't do that in here. We don't yell out like that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate that support. I appreciate all those comments. Look, I live out there. I, I don't, what we risk is the lawsuit and reverting back to the old development of something that would be much, much more congestion driving than this. I don't have a problem with this development, save for the apartments. I just don't. My constituency has been real clear with me on that. You know, as for development all over the county, we live out there because it's not developed. I live out there because it's not developed. I live in rural Newton County, lived there all my life. I want to live there the rest of my life. Now, I know it's not gonna be rural the rest of my life, but I have a responsibility to, 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 to manage this county or manage District One or do my part of that to the best of my ability to certain sworn statements and to represent my constituency. My constituency made it crystal clear when I ran for office that District One, they did not want District One to be the congested area that we see in other parts of the county because of what previous boards had done, some of those things we've remedied recently. But my, when I was voted into office, it was on the promise that I would do what I can to make, keep District One as rural appealing as I can. It's rural nature. Now, this does not do anything to take away from my rural nature in District One. I love this development. I think we, I think it's time. I think if you can, if you could transplant Clark's Grove to this particular piece of property, then I would love it because that's gonna bring, that's gonna bring me a Steak and Shake, maybe. That's gonna bring, you know, something else, just a little something out there that does not take away from the rural serenity of where a lot of these people live. So I, I don't think we're opposed to progress, but we are opposed to what apartments could bring and the stigma of apartments. Now, I'm just requesting thirty days so that I can get with my constituency, the owners of the property. And who, do we know who's gonna develop the property?
Mr. Fowler, yeah.
Mr. Fowler, so, so you, you plan on doing this? I'll get with you, Mr. Fowler. Okay. So I didn't know if you had planned to sell it or what, but, um, so, and one other issue we're forgetting. Say, we were to plop this development down right now, what would our schools do? Where would we be with our schools? They're already overcrowded. So we have to think about all these things. And I was, if, if we could find a way to carve off apartments right now, you'd hear a motion for me to approve this tonight. But I've got to make sure that we, number one, that the constituency understands exactly what it is and what these apartments might look like. These aren't your typical apartments. So I, I'm just respectfully asking for thirty days. I'll get with the owner. I'll get with the constituency. I'll talk to each, all of you. If we can, if we can table this for thirty days, I know that doesn't make the owners happy, but I have to, I have to answer to a different, a different, a different crowd, and rightfully so. So, and, and this, you know, I had, I had not even thought about the, the traffic. I get off I-20, and it's backed up to I-20 from Highway two seventy-eight on Highway eleven. So, you know, you gotta factor all those things in there. I thought we had thought of everything. I thought we had, I thought I could suggest a solution that might be amicable to, or at least partially amicable. It doesn't sound like that's legally possible. So I respectfully ask that we table this for thirty days.
All right. It's been motion, it's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Schultz that this be tabled for thirty days. All in favor? All opposed? It's tabled for thirty days, four one. Next on the agenda is... Hey, guys, we are still, please, we're still in a board meeting. Please, we're still in the board meeting. Guys, we, we are still in the board meeting. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I seek a motion that we approve. Y'all?
Someone stated by chairman.
Recession? Come on, guys. The motion, man. Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson, seconded by Commissioner Edwards. All in favor? Pass five to zero. Next on the agenda is item number nine. Discussion, discussion and approval of service agreement between Newton County and Alexander Thomas, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all recall, this came before you two meetings ago, and we needed to have the contract, needed some further review. It has passed the review of our county attorney, and so we'd like to move ahead with it. Also, as you will recall, this is a contract to work with the Tomas, Mr. Tomas and Associates for monitoring of our, the rates that we pay on all of our utilities. Essentially, what Mr. Tomas's service would include would be to monitor those rates, to negotiate if there were found mistakes in billings and so forth, then he would negotiate with the utility provider to obtain the best rate that's possible. In exchange for that, he would receive a percentage of the savings for a period of up to twenty-four months.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards. Can I get a second, please? Seconded by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? Sure? Hold, we got one discussion. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, Lloyd, I just want to clarify. This is just gonna be for twenty-four months, right? And then after that, we can decide if we want to continue this particular service.
The, the contract is actually a renewable contract. If we, it has, it's a one-year contract with automatic renewal unless that we can, for five years, unless that we contact them within the specified period of time that we no longer want his services. He would continue to, if he found savings, for instance, let's say that we had been, the rate we're paying for electricity was a dollar per kilowatt, and we should have only been charged forty-five cents a kilowatt, then that saving, we would continue to pay that saving for a period of up to twenty-four months. Yes, even if we canceled the contract with him, there is a requirement that we would, that we would pay him for that. So yes, that, and it would be at the same percentage, but there's no other cost to the county except for that difference in the savings.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. It passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is nine A, and it's appointment to the election board. We did see, received several names to the election board for apartments. The final two that made the cut was Mr. Dan Ragsdale and Mr. Phil Johnson. So we're gonna vote on Mr. Dan Ragsdale first and Mr. Phil Johnson second. Commissioner Edwards?
We're gonna have, any discussion first?
Yes, sir. We up for discussion now?
Thank you. Let me, let me start out by saying that I've known Mr. Johnson all my life, grew up with his sister, his late sister, and his brother. I don't question Mr. Johnson's integrity at all. What I do question is his, his passion for serving as a Democratic Party chairman in this county, and this is supposed to be a neutral party. And I'd be saying the same thing if he had served for the chairman of the Republican Party. So I, it, and I know he's a passionate person, so, you know, how, if this is supposed to be a person that's neutral to party, then, then how will we expect Mr. Johnson to do that? And I'm not questioning his integrity. I don't, I don't want to repeat myself again, but I'm just not, I consider Mr. Johnson a friend. So I, I just, I have my reservations about how we can, you know, Mr. Johnson can serve. I don't think I could serve with impartiality in that position, having been a chairman of a, of a political party. And those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to kind, kind of add to that, I know Phil Johnson as well. I definitely don't question his integrity. And I've personally seen him work from a nonpartisan perspective. I have personally seen him not take sides when it could have been easy to take a side. And I think anyone that gets into this role will have a party in their mind. As we saw, our last person that filled this role was a Republican and served in that capacity for years. And so I, I think, when you look at it, you want somebody that you can trust their judgment. I think you want somebody that... I think you want somebody that you can, they, they're gonna use their utmost integrity. And I think we want to take parties out of this decision and look at who do we think is gonna be the best fit? Um, who basically will be the one that will be able to make strategic and the best decisions for this area of our government? And so, I don't want us to focus on, as a board, looking at, okay, these individuals from a party perspective. I think we should look at them and say, who's gonna be the best fit? Um, who's gonna help take this area of our government to the next level? And who's gonna give sound judgment and sound, um, reason, um, when it comes to this particular role? So, I, I, I think we shouldn't focus on party. I think we should really focus on who's gonna be the best fit for this position.
Hey, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney Martin for a quick second.
Um, thank you, Chairman. Um, you're talking about how the board itself should be neutral. The way it's written, and it's, it's old, as we know, each year, I, I, I am during this because we have an ordinance, but then we have a local law that trumps it. And specifically mentions that one member of the board shall be a member of the political party which received the highest number of votes within the county for its candidate for governor in the general election. Of course, the person cannot hold any other office. That's something we've been through multiple times. Um, so the way we're set up here, we could go to our local delegation and look to change that local law. Um, it is inconsistent with our ordinances currently, and this itself would trump because it's a higher law. Um, if that's something that you all want to do or look at doing, I think it's really within the purview of meeting with the Board of Elections and see, make sure you feel heard about what your, what your perspective is. But I just wanted you all to know, I mean, that's, the law is written on this document.
I think that's, that's, um, that's one of the, um, that's one of the questions that, that's the question that, uh, Commissioner Henderson, um, sent in for our retreat, so we will be discussing that, uh, particular item at our retreat.
Ms. Megan, um, my question is, are we gonna choose this person?
Mr. Ragsdale or Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson. Are we gonna choose the, the person at this particular meeting? So, what, you know?
Um, so, Megan, Ms. Martin, I, I need you to, I need you to plain speak that for me.
I'll try my very best to plain, uh, plain speak here for you. The only body that can appoint, the governing authority, is Newton County. So, that rests within y'all's purview to choose who you would like to appoint. Now, it's, it's an experience I haven't had where it's appointment and go on. It's typically of one person. So, in this scenario, if we go in plain language, three people, um, one person as the chair, and then one person of, one, there's Democrat Party, one person of the Republican Party. What, when someone that was on the Democrat side of things fell off, the Democratic Party made their recommendations as to who they would like to see take that seat. And that is consistent, except you have two candidates, so you're gonna have to decide between them.
Okay, so, um, I just would like to speak to both candidates because I know both of them. And I honestly do not know what party Mr. Ragsdale represents. He is a constituent in my district. He has been on the, well, he has been a poll worker since two thousand and six. He's been a very reliable poll worker. He is always, to me, seems very impartial. I also know Phil Johnson, and I think that, um, Mr. Johnson has done a, a, an exemplary job in leading the Democratic Party. He's no longer leading the Democratic Party, but I, I feel confident that he would do a good job as well. So, I, you know, I am comfortable with either candidate. I, I really, I, I'm comfortable with either one. I believe both of them would do an excellent job, and I have no problems with either one. So, whoever wants to make the motion, it won't be me.
Any more, I'm sorry, Attorney Martin, please.
Um, and keep in mind that Mr. Steele was kind enough to make his resignation effective October first. So, um, should this be something that you all table until a date certain? I, I don't know if that'll happen or not. Just keep in mind where we are with Mr. Steele's resignation date.
Any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, first of all, you know, um, my good friend, Mr. Steele, um, who, who led us in our elections, you know, he did my, to me, whether he was Republican or Democrat. I don't think how long it was at the, at the end of the day, that he made sure that the employees counted the votes right and that who was elected, he told them. And it was good, you know? And I don't know why we keep getting on this thing when it comes to people about whether you're Democrat or Republican. This is the time you should throw that out the window and choose the person that you think best fits your... And I'm gonna tell you a little bit about who I, who I, what I know about Mr. Phil. Jim, I don't know. You may have seen him, but I don't know. I know that whenever you go over to his office and, and talk with him about a legal issue, that he'll give you the best advice that he can. I know there have been, uh, a few times that we have disagreed on certain issues, and he don't mind telling you where it is. You want somebody that, that won't tell you what you want to hear or who will tell you what you need to know. And I'm confident that Mr. Phil will be that person.
Any more discussion? I seek a motion, please. Um, um, I'm sorry. Uh, the first one we'll be, we will be voting on is Mr. Dan Ragsdale. Seek a motion.
You're doing it fine. Seek a motion, um, to approve like any other vote. Um, and if we felt, it failed for lack of a second, just to make sure on our minutes, it's, it failed for lack of a second.
Um, so first, we'll, I'll seek a motion for Mr., um, Dan Ragsdale. Anybody wanna make a motion for Mr. Ragsdale? Okay, thank you. Uh, now, I seek a motion for Mr. Phil Johnson. Anybody wanna make a motion for Mr. Phil Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, um, as, as was stated by you. For Mr. Phil.
It's been motioned, um, that Mr. Phil Johnson be appointed to the Board of Elections as chair-at-large, uh, by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? Passes five to zero. Thank you so much. Um, next is, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Phil, I apologize. Mr. Phil Johnson is here tonight. Sir, if you would, please, uh, stand and be recognized. We so greatly... We, we so greatly appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you so much. Item number ten, um, discussion of approval of the Highway 278 CID sponsor letter. I think that is, Ms. Morgan? Ms. Morgan?
Good evening. Um, tonight, I have submitted to your package, I believe you received a copy of the letter of sponsorship for the, um, TIP solicitation, which is a grant for federal funding for, um, surface block grants, TAP, which is transportation alternative funding, and, um, L-CIs through the ARC. Uh, this is, project will be between, a partnership between the City of Covington and the CID, with Newton County being the lead sponsor as the largest body of government in the county. Um, the City of Covington will be performing the duties of project management. They will be the official project sponsor because all of the CID is within the City of Covington. And, um, they also will be, make, they have made a commitment to GDOT to sup, to pay, maintain the landscaping and the streetlights around both of the roundabouts. This section of this grant goes from Phase One, which is from Exit 90 to Emery Street. And, um, the GDOT has sent us a letter committing to the safety and operation improvements, which is the medians, the roundabouts, and the two R-cut intersections in that section of highway, um, which I have given to, to Megan today. Um, and, uh, I'm asking for your support, and it will also be your commitment of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in matching funds. And I have limited it to that amount. That letter structures it in that shape. And, um, then, uh, if we receive the grant, which we should know in February of next year, that's the tentative date, then, um, we will come back to you for either an intergovernmental agency agreement and/or, um, a resolution that you will have to then, to officially commit those dollars at that time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kerr, you're having a think.
You will recall that, um, this board did commit three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of our two thousand and seventeen transportation cost to fund, um, the match, our match portion of this project.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Um, thank you.
I move for approval of the Highway 278 sponsor letter for the TIP solicitation.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Um, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
It passes five to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, next is item number eleven, discussion approval of, of transfer of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of SPOSS, uh, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you all know, um, our, uh, the SPOSS project for the animal control shelter, um, was, uh, w-w-was under budgeted, by Franklin. Um, I've identified funds in our capital improvement fund, um, that we could use to put towards that project. This is a project that is in its, um, that is about to begin. It is one of the bonded projects, so we do need to get to work on it. Um, and so, the timing is such that if we did have excess funds at the end of the, um, at the excess collections at the end of the SPOSS period, um, it's several years out before we get to that point where we know we have excess funds. So, what I'd like to do is to request that we transfer three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our, uh, capital improvements fund to this particular SPOSS project. I've also asked Mr. Jeff Krine, who is our project manager from Ascension Consultants, um, to talk with you a little bit tonight about what that additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars will allow us to do. And we do have, um, I believe he's got a plan, a conceptual plan. We're, we're in our, getting close to our final stages of doing the design work now. And so, um, that's why we wanted to bring this to you at this point before we got any further, and, um, also to show you where we are so far on the project. So, now I'll turn it over to Mr. Krine.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. Um, what you see on the diagram is, um, actually the existing building, which is the pink, the yellow, uh, and the blue. And then what you see, which is in green and orange, is the planned addition. Over the last couple of months, what we've been doing is working with the Director of Animal Control, sending her team to analyze the, the needs that she had, the existing condition of the existing building, um, and to look at how we could best use the funding that we have. Um, we know that the existing building needs to be renovated. Um, it needs new mechanical systems. It just needs a whole lot of updates to make it, um, improve the operational capability of the building itself. So, in the, the existing budget, what we have found is that we have adequate funds to renovate the existing building by gutting the inside of it and re, reconfiguring it and re-modernizing the mechanical systems, the electrical systems, uh, repainting it and, and making it into a nicer facility. Um, we would not have enough money to, um, renovate the admin and the pink areas, um, nor would we do any kind of adjustments to the Sallyport, which is in the blue. We would have enough money to actually include an addition that would be sized around just the green. The orange would not be able to be funded at that time. What that does for us is, um, for the large dogs, um, there are no, there are no, uh, no additional runs added for the large dogs, and our capacity is seventeen. Um, we reduced the quarantine area by a small amount, and our, and our capacity is five. The small dogs and puppies are, are gaining a small percentage, and our capacity goes up to twenty. The cats, um, gain the largest amount of our improvements, about a fifty percent improvement there, with a, uh, capacity of forty. So, the cats are really the only one that really gains. And if you see what we did in the yellow part of it, that is the biggest part of our renovation side of it. If we were, um, able to get the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what does that do for us? Well, obviously, everything that you see in the yellow still gets renovated, like we talked about. Um, but we also get to add an additional addition to the, kind of the orangy color right there, which is the quarantine. Um, and that would increase our quarantine, double the space of quarantine of our animals. And then, up in the addition, the orange area, which is the additional large dog areas, we would be able to get two more bays of that. And that would give us a capacity of twenty-nine or an increase of twelve. It also would add about four hundred square feet of admin space and a meet and greet space, which is very important because that's where, a space they would use for, uh, counseling, adoption, uh, and gives a kind of a, a good area to have the community come in and be a part of the process itself. The small dogs and puppies and the cats obviously would stay the same. So, um, obviously, if we go with the, the existing budget, we're able to do a lot of improvements out there. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars really helps to expand the facility and prepare it to be at a higher level capacity for the community.
Thank you, sir. Um, I seek a motion, guys. They may have a few questions, so, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, transfer of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for additional funding for the animal shelter.
Um, it was motioned by Commissioner Cowan, and I'm gonna give Commissioner, uh, Edwards this one. The second is in his district. Well, it's his, his SPOSS funds. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the question that I have is, Mr. Lloyd, and I apologize, Mr. I wouldn't, I couldn't, I coke some drink. When is that funding, uh, you say it's coming from, from what, the?
We budgeted a little over half a million dollars this year to go into the, uh, capital improvements fund. Um, from FY nineteen, we're carrying over three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, uh, that was in the capital improvement fund there. So, the total balance in the fund will be eight seventy-seven. And if we, um, transfer the three fifty, then, that leaves us still with a little over half a million dollars for, um, some project, other projects that, um, we were looking at.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Cowan, I mean, I'll switch to Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, for, for a little history, the, the, the two thousand and seventeen SPOSS funds that were to be allocated for District One were actually allocated for a county-wide, um, renovation of the animal shelter, for those that don't know. So, um, that's where we are with that. And if you, if you haven't been to the facility, haven't seen the facility, or you haven't read anything about the facility, you understand that we'll, even with the three hundred and fifty, if it were to be approved, we're still behind the curve in terms of our county, our county's size, inflation, uh, and... county's size, inflation, uh, and the cost, you know, since the, since the rebound in the economy, the, uh, the, the inflation within the building industry is, is, is outpaced normal inflation. So, um, it's, it's, it's much needed and even when it's finished, we're still going to be, we, we, it just gets us maybe back to, to, to square one, um, in terms of our shelter.
It, it will give us a little bit of room, um, for, uh, for a few years. One of the design, um, uh, one of the characteristics of the building of the addition that we're doing, it's done in, uh, where there's a, uh, it's done in bays. So there's the ability to add on, if you look to the top section, to the right there of that green section, you, we can easily add on as the future, as a county grows, as the demand becomes more, this design will provide us an opportunity to add on in the future. So, um, that's an important part of this design that we're doing.
It's, it's part of the master plan and we wanted to make sure we had a, uh, a plan that will allow us to add modules, um, so we could increase and grow as, as we know we will have to in, in the future. So like Fordham was saying, you just grab one of those bays and you just add it on and we can keep going for probably, probably at least double the size of what you see up there.
One last question. What does that do for air conditioning? I mean, we're, are we good on air conditioning?
Completely, we're completely, well, right now it's not conditioned, but we are including a, a new air conditioning system in the existing building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, sorry. Anyone else? All in favor? Pass five to zero. Thank you. Um, next is, um, citizen comments. Uh, this is an opportunity we allow citizens, citizens to come up and make comments. Uh, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You may come at this time.
Barbara Morgan, two one five eight East Street, Covington, Georgia. Commissioner Cowan said that the changes are come already in place and coming to the east side of the county. Commissioner Mason said, let's look at the big picture. And I would like to encourage this board to look at the big picture as you consider the planned development at Mount Pleasant. You've got a developer in the name of Rob Fowler, who's got a demonstrated commitment to quality development, to conservation and preservation. And if you're going to have development on the east end of the county, let's back somebody like Rob Fowler with his carefully thought out and planned development. I would say embrace it, take your time, meet with your constituents, but it's coming to the east side of the county. Back somebody who's committed to do it well.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next, please. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Johnny Banks.
All y'all together?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, so we'll do it right. It's, um, you all come over, get us attached, get him off too. There you go. All right. Go ahead, sir.
Sure. My name is Johnny Banks. I live in Silver Ridge Farm Subdivision. And, um, we're here as concerned citizens, just wanting to, uh, uh, talk to, uh, the commissioners about, uh, some issues with development going on behind our subdivision. And, uh, we're all here, um, just wanting to, uh, find out a little bit more about details about apartments that are being built. I know there's, uh, the Gin dealership also supposedly being built. And I don't know if it's a hotel, if it's apartments. We don't know any details. We haven't been talked to about it at all. We just heard it, heard about it. So we're just here right now as some concerned citizens and I would.
Thank you, guys. Hey, guys. So the way it works, um, you make your comments to the board and then, um, you have three minutes to do so. And then after you guys make your comments, the board, uh, in turn, return have four minutes to make their comments at the end. Um, so when you present your question, the board won't give you a response right now, um, but they may answer your question when they respond. Uh, they have four minutes to do so. So, uh, please state your name, your address for the record.
My name is Broderick L. Johnson, Senior, Silver Ridge Farms, Covington, Georgia. I have about three questions. One is about the dog shelter that just got approved.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we approved a shelter for dogs, but yet we wouldn't prove housing for kids, for college students. That's my first question. Second, D.R. Horton has been building in Covington and they have, I don't know, they're so large, it's a large conglomerate, that they're messing over the buildings that they're building. And it's being passed on by the commissioners or whoever in charge of overseeing these projects. No one's coming out to check up on D.R. Horton. You have his bond, but you're not coming out to check up on him to see if the project is approved or if the, the buildings are in good condition. What they're turning in Covington, they're building trash and they're having us to pay for. And we're not finding out that after we move in, they have some of the homes that the foundation is probably going to give away, but nothing is being done about it. Marietta, they stopped D.R. Horton from building. DeKalb, they stopped D.R. Horton from building. And I think you guys need to follow suit, piggyback if we do the same. D.R. Horton is a bunch of trash. And thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Heinz. I live at Thirty Street in Glenport. Uh, I am also a home buyer that I purchased from D.R. Horton. We have had several issues out there. We have been in contact constantly with Newton County, the different departments. Um, DeKalb County has stopped building. Augusta, Georgia has stopped building with D.R. Horton. Um, there's just a lot of things that's going out. They're pushing us to take over and the problem is it, the bond should not be released. So we do need you guys' help to try to help us find out what's really going on out there near D.R. Horton. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Kelvin Thomas. Um, I do have a problem with D.R. Horton. Uh, I got the house right beside the model home and he had finished completing and, uh, he had to put a garage on it. He left trash out there and I put in, complain about it. Uh, I lived on the same road where the road buckled in and took him like two years repairing. And I did want to know about what was going to be built behind us off the fairway road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My, uh, name is John Alderman. I'm, uh, here with Stop ETO, uh, Georgia, and, uh, been seeing quite a bit of this. I'm a former U.S. Navy Engineering Watch Supervisor in submarines, uh, very extensive NBC training. Uh, I was Region Four EPA under Isle Smith. I was his, uh, nuclear guy for ten states, which also included with Al doing nuclear, biological and chemical. I'm very concerned about the ETO going on and I've been working on, um, a remote monitoring system, which is kind of in my woods, but I just haven't done ethylene oxide before. I've done it for machinery and other things in the air, chlorine, ammonia, and stuff like that. Just a different sensor, which could ring a facility or wherever you're having the problem and tell you when you have the problem and you wouldn't have to wait for a laboratory to tell you you had the problem. It would tell you instantly there was a leak as soon as the vapor of the gas got to it. I'm also, and I've been told I need to contact you on this, I am, uh, Department Homeland Security FEMA DH, uh, CERT. I'm what's called a T-three. I'm a trainer. I'm like an apostle and I can help you all with, I understand you have a problem with getting a CERT going here in this county, so I'll leave my card on that for you as well. Um, like I said, it is totally possible and I don't understand why these people are operating and there's no early warning system. It's not expensive. It would, it would cut down their liability insurance. And I'm not sure where I am in my three minutes. My wife told me to watch the cameras. Yes, sir. Yeah, I know. I, I'm there, but I've, I've also got veteran's eyes going for me now. Um, is there any questions on that? I mean, it, I just, it's frankly, the technology exists. It's existed for, you know, uh, and it's been upgraded and getting better all the time and, uh, there should be an early warning system. Uh, I went over to a meeting at your, um, public housing and then I found out that the facility was a couple of football throws from there. And I went, what? This is Section Eight. Is that right for what you call that, or the low-income housing and everything? Well, it's whoever you do for the least of his. You know, it should be, these people, if you're having leaks, if it's showing up at all, if you have a concern for it, if you have the installation, I look at the construction of these places and I go, I'm a conditioner contractor too, okay? I got a little bit on this. I've done work for Centers for Disease Control. I've built a laboratory for them on tuberculosis. So I look at these places and I go, what? Air infiltration through this place? You've got a stack going up in the air, but you've got a place that's like a rig of a shack?
Thank you, thank you, sir.
You know? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Frederick Johnson, uh, I think it was ten thirty-six, Highway one sixty-two, in the Spring Hill community. The question that's been asked, uh, I know that money been set aside at SPOSS for a park in the Spring Hill community. Uh, has anything been done about that? Uh, we would like to know, uh, we would like to be in on the, on the, on the, where, where it's going to go and all this kind of good stuff. So just let me know. You've got my number. Give me a call. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening. Cindy Jordan, ten sixty-five Silverthorne Drive. I know y'all are excited to see me back up here again. All right. So you know what I stand for. Say no to ETO. Um, for those in the audience, please look us up on the Facebook group page and follow us for all the current news information and, um, articles on there. What I wanted to mention to you guys tonight, um, there was a gentleman that came to our meeting with the EPA, uh, the, on August twenty-first. He had purchased an individual ETO monitoring device. He, his name is Frank Austin. He and I have been in communication quite a bit lately. Um, he found that when he was inside the courthouse, there were no high levels that triggered on his, uh, on a, a device that he could purchase off the internet. He also said that when he went behind BD board, there were alarms went off. A policeman rode by him and had, looked at him in a quizzingly way and no questions were asked or anything. But his most, the disturbing part about it is that the, behind the BD board is where the highest levels were from what his little detector could tell. So it was even going off, um, in the area up to a mile behind it. What, that point is if his little device that he could, uh, purchase off the internet was detecting ETO at high rates, imagine what a, a company that, like Montross, that is doing it for a living, that has it fine-tuned for all the particulates that it needs, what it will find. So I just wanted, just to mention that to you guys. He's someone that we have access to if you have any questions for him, for his device. Uh, John Alderman is a brilliant man that you just heard from two people ago. Um, he is working on putting together a device that can do it twenty-four seven. We're working with, um, the group Stop Sterogenics in Smyrna. They're over five thousand people. We are, um, well over five hundred and thirty people right now just in the Covington area. So we, we have a large group of people that are working on this problem. We're using the resources from Illinois, Willbrook, Illinois, who just got Sterogenics shut down permanently. Yay. Um, so just keep in mind that, that we are an active force, that we are wanting to know where you guys stand. I know, I asked that a month ago, um, but we want to know if there's any updates from you guys. Um, Chairman, if there's anything that you can share with us about what's happening, um, what you're finding out with EPA, with Governor, whatever, that you can share, we would love to get an update. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I know, uh, Commissioner Schultz and I toured, um, BD one day like Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, Monday. Seems like less. We, uh, we toured that facility a week ago and, um, I, I came away, felt like I was a lot more educated than I was definitely before I went in there. So also there was a, there was a back page write-up in the Covington News, Sunday was a week ago, and it was the print edition. I couldn't find it online. I was hoping Jackie would be here, but, um, of a, of a PhD that had worked in the Clinton administration that had, uh, quite, it, it was quite an educating write-up for me and, and with tons of perspective on our, on the ETO issue. So I would encourage people somehow to find that write-up. It was the entire back page of the first section of the Covington News. Um, uh, at, at the time, it was eight A. off of work, my friend, I know. Just let me know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just think we, I just wanted to say, I think we had an excellent meeting tonight and, um, based off of the items that we addressed on the agenda this evening, I really believe that Newton County is moving in a phenomenal direction. Um, I'm loving the direction that we're going, the things that we are incorporating into our county. Um, and I hadn't mentioned this as of, well, actually I just found out that I have now been placed on the, um, economic development workforce for, um, Legislative Committee for NACO. So I'm excited about that, to be on that legislative committee. Yeah. So I'm excited about that and I really want to begin to focus on our county from an economic development and a workforce development and really, uh, gain some resources from all over the United States to really bring back, to help develop, uh, Newton County because I think we have some sharp people here, smart, intelligent leaders, um, and our citizens are phenomenal. Uh, I love our citizens. I love the feedback they give, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. I always want to encourage feedback because coming from corporate America, or still, not coming from, still in corporate America, um, feedback is always great and you don't really know how, where to go, where to move, or how to change or shift things if you don't get that feedback. And so I think feedback is vital and so I want to encourage our citizens to continue to give your feedback in every single county, every single district. It doesn't matter what it is, bring it to our attention because that's how we know what we need to fix and what we need to work on and how we need to enhance things and how we need to do more research to, to do better things. So I'm just excited about where we're going. Um, I'm glad to be a part of this board. I mean, you guys are phenomenal. I keep saying it over and over. I mean, yes, I, I really do, honestly, and, um, thank you guys for welcoming me as this, the junior, uh, commissioner. And, uh, I'm looking to work with and our county and really make some big, major things happen and continue to put Newton County on the map all over the state of Georgia so that they know who we are. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd like to address the citizens of, um, Silver Ridge. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate you coming tonight. Um, I will be happy to meet with your entire nation.
I will be happy to meet with your entire neighborhood and get you up to speed on not only what is going on in your neighborhood, you can get me up to speed on what's going on in your neighborhood. When that neighborhood was originally built, it was under Crown Communities, so D.R. Horton bought Crown Communities, and so there have been some changes since the original approval. I'd love to have some more time to spend with you, and then fill you in on what's taking place at the, along the access road, and the project for the interchange improvement as well that will be coming to exit eighty-eight. So, if you will see me after the board meeting, and I'll give you my cards, and we can set up a date for me to come and speak to your neighborhood, that would be great. Commissioner Edwards, I would encourage you and your citizens to take a tour of the multifamily units at Clark's Grove and the new addition at Clark's Grove, because they have apartment-style condominiums there already, and you can get a sense of what that type of facility looks like. And I think it would be helpful for some of your citizens to accompany you and take that tour. I will tell you that you will be blown away by going into some of those apartments. They are absolutely beautiful.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to add, Commissioner Shelton, this is District Four, where those apartments are at. And to have, I mean, to have a town search is one that Mr. Rob is wanting to build over there by the colleges, would be truly a blessing for that particular area and its economic growth. But, look, this afternoon, you know, and I think the young man just said it best, he said, "Dawg, they'd rather approve, approve a dog shelter than to go out there and approve a place for college students to baby resting, you know, have a place where they can come out from campus and go in." And this is about, you're right, you're one hundred percent right, man. And I want to congratulate you for just listening to us and hearing and seeing the big picture. Secondly, ETO, ethanol oxide, it's poisonous, it's poisonous. People will kill you. You can't smell it, you can't taste it. And, you know, and most people say, well, it's around the poor neighborhood. But guess what? I got a map that a mile around it, it takes you in Fort Street, too. And it's a lot of people who can't smell it and don't, may not even know what's going on their bodies. And when you, if you knock on people's doors, like I have, and I knock, because I care about people, because people are the reason why I've been for so long the senior commissioner, because they thought enough of me to keep re-electing me, even though people were saying kind of somewhat bad things about me. And you found breast cancer, leukemia, in our neighborhoods, and there's no alarm going on. And in other counties, they're closing down those plants. She just said it. Look at TV, you're here for yourself. They'll run off old permits. They're not new permits. They were permits from prior companies, well, they're maybe twenty years before that, and they're still allowing to run off those same permits. We need to close down their plant and any other plant, because I'm telling you, cancers are very dangerous and bad, it's bad. It can miss you your health until you die. It's not good. And I've seen people die from cancer. So, you're doing right, so circle, twenty miles away, everybody getting banned together. You don't know where that stuff comes, it's in the air, it's airborne toxin. And they'll say, well, it's about the gas. You can smell the gas. You can smell the gas. You can't smell the other stuff. You know something smell bad, you know it's bad, you kind of go the other direction or roll your windows up. You can't roll your windows up with that. It's in the air. Sixteen billion dollar plant, hired all the best attorneys in the state of Georgia to protect them, consultants, the best consultants in the state of Georgia, so they can continue to do what they're doing to this very poor Covington, they're like sheep in a slaughter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick housekeeping matter. Megan, if you have about ten minutes after this, I need to discuss something, if you don't mind. Mr. Johnson, Spring Hill Park, I got the schematic in last week. I've got it on my phone, and I'll be glad to share it with you. One of the issues that we've got out there is trying to figure out some of the topography and some of the lay of that proposed site, but it actually looks pretty good. And then we've got some, as I talked to Lloyd this week, we've got a landscape architect we've hired in planning and zoning. I wanted him to have an opportunity to review that plan, and then we're going to be getting it out to the people we talked to over in the Spring Hill community. So, but I'll be glad to share that with you tonight, and I'll show you what we've put together so far. And as to the ETO issues, we haven't forgot about it. I think the chairman made more report on that. I don't know if you do or not, but we haven't forgot about that, and there's been some information from the Governor's Office that we've seen recently. And, you know, we haven't, just let everybody know, we haven't forgot about it, and so we just won't worry about it.
Mr. Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier tonight, Commissioner Cowan made a few comments about Georgia State University and attempted to diminish my beloved alma mater. And so, well, I just wanted to remind him that that revered school in Athens is the University of Georgia.
Thank you, sir. Quick update, the update is that we are still working with the Governor's Office. They are doing some investigation, and I'll leave it at that. I won't go any further than saying, saying no more than that, because I have not been authorized to. So, I will tell you that they're doing some investigations, and hopefully we'll hear something soon. Is there a need for an executive session? Thank you, ma'am. I seek a motion that we're joining. It's a motion by Stan and J.C. I mean, it's a motion by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner.